Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to your August meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. So glad to see so many of you in the audience here visiting with us tonight. Welcome to those of you who are watching at home on TV 6, those of you who have joined us on Facebook, and of course, those of you around the world who I'm sure have turned in on our streaming network on LewisvilleNC.net. It's a pleasure to have you all joining with us tonight. We'll begin the meeting this evening with an invocation by David Smithman. David is the chairman of our Parks and Recreation Committee, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Fred Franklin. So if you're able, please stand and join us.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting customarily with our roll call of council members.
Hello. Good evening, Ed Smith. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening.
Sandra Mott.
I'm Mike Corn.
Robert Gray.
And I'm Fred Franklin. A pleasure to be a council member.
Very good. Council members Gallman and Zinger are not able to make the meeting this evening, so they will have an absence, but we do have a quorum. Yes, Mrs. Walker?
Yes, we do.
Very good. Council members, there have been just a couple of additions to our agenda. Surprise, surprise. And the additions are under 11 new business. We've added three items for your consideration this evening. We'll just call them under Stormwater Discussion. We'll call them Items 1, 2, and 3, and they are two ordinances and a resolution, and we'll brief you on those when we get to that point in the agenda. I'd also like to add, at the end of our meeting, a brief, Mr. Smith, and I'll emphasize that for you, because I understand the car is waiting with the motor running outside in your [inaudible].
If I'm late, I'm gonna be spending the weekend with you.
We'll move this meeting along really fast then. A brief executive session where we'll go into, executive session to discuss some real estate issues. Ms. Walker, are there any other changes, revisions since our briefing?
Unfortunately, no.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mott makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Hank, if you'll lead us through the consent agenda, please.
Yes, the consent agenda this evening consists of four items. First is Resolution 2019056 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for June 2019. The approval of council briefing inaction minutes from July 2, 2019. Approval of council close session minutes from July 2, 2019. And finally, the approval of council meeting minutes from July 11, 2019.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. They're generally our financial reports or our minutes. We take them as a group rather than talking about them individually. However, if any council member wishes to pull any item off and discuss it and vote on it independently, they're certainly welcome to do that. With that, council members, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Abby Hill. I think I can do this without my glasses. Let's hope so. This is Walker. Prepare these notes, and they're in 40-point type, so I should be able to read them like this. Abby, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that don't know, we have a student. I'm a little loud, aren't I, George? I don't think I have the volume control here, but, okay, well, speak softer. We have a Student Leadership Committee that the council formed a number of years ago. Mr. Franklin had, was instrumental in bringing that idea to the council. It gives young people in Lewisville an opportunity to learn about, I don't like that echo. If you'll excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. There's any better? Good. It allows our young people to learn about Lewisville's government, learn about our town and our community, and the goal is to make them more active and involved in determining the future of Lewisville. Abby, you have been on the Student Leadership Committee for seven years. That is the longest you can possibly serve on this group. I believe your brother did the same thing. Is that the guy sitting right out there? No, 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 that's your dad. He's young enough to be your brother. And you, just some other things about you that Mrs. Walker has shared with me. You are only out of the, what is, we're almost 15 years into Student Leadership?
I'm sorry.
We're only, oh, almost 15 years in Student Leadership?
Actually, longer than that.
We're longer than that into Student Leadership, and we've only had five students who have participated the full seven years, so it's quite an accomplishment. Abby has been involved in a number of the projects, including clothing drive for the battered women's shelter. She has been involved in service clubs, including the Cross Creek Equestrian Center. So you're a horseback rider.
I am, yeah.
That's great. She's student director at the Drama Club, so we'll ask her to perform here momentarily. And she has been on mission trips outside of the country for the past three years. Where did you go?
I've been to Canada and the Dominican Republic three times.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your work there. That's amazing. Was it a good experience?
It's awesome.
Fabulous. Abby graduates in May, and when she graduates, she will go on to Liberty University, where she's going to get a major in biomedical sciences.
Yes.
For a career in healthcare?
Yeah, nutrition.
Wonderful. Well, Abby, on behalf of the council, of course, Mrs. Walker is the sponsor of that, and I believe also you and Stacy, correct?
And.
No, you and, okay, Ms. Orell.
Pam.
Well, I didn't introduce at the beginning of the meeting, and somebody didn't remind me that I forgot to introduce the staff. Mr. Franklin was ready to jump in and do that. But Abby, this is in recognition of outstanding accomplishments and participation in and service to the town of Lewisville and the Student Leadership Committee. This is our Leadership Development Program, 2012 to 2019. It's with great pleasure and pride that I present this to you on behalf of the Lewisville Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Chance for your drama.
I just direct.
We have another brief presentation for you, and this was on your agenda. Ms. Walker, would you please come up? Mrs. Walker, yes.
That'd be you.
Somebody slipped something past me, didn't they?
We're not gonna let you touch the screen.
Now, Mrs. Walker does not want to talk about her birthday, and we're certainly not gonna ask her how old she is, but I will say to you-
I don't mind.
Fabulous. Circles around all the rest of us. I'll add on that. So you are an immensely valuable asset to the town of Lewisville, and we thank Clint and Paige for sharing you with us, because I know they give up a lot not having you around, or maybe they're relieved not having you around. But we just know that on behalf of the council, we appreciate everything that you do. And for somebody who bakes cakes, you don't eat cake, but I'm gonna present you with a cake anyway, and you can do with it what you want. Happy birthday, Joyce.
Thank you. I'm getting somebody back. Thank you all.
And in my anxiousness to get through to those presentations, I did neglect to introduce to your council, our staff members Hank Perkins, our town manager, Stacy Holbert, our town planner. Back on the video equipment is George Hauser, our Public Works Director. Ms. Joyce Walker, who you just met, is our town clerk, and Ms. Pam Orell, who is our town finance director. Did I miss anybody? Very good. Mrs. Walker, I believe you have our first item of business.
Actually, I do. That is the appointment order 209, I'm sorry, 2019004, and this is appointing our upcoming Student Leadership Committee for this upcoming school year of 2019 to 2020.
Very good.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this for another continual year.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Mott makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous, and congratulations, and we look forward to a great and wonderful and eventful year on behalf of the Student Leadership Committee. This will be the first opportunity we have for anybody in the audience who wishes to come up and address the council. It's our public forum, and this is your chance to talk about anything that's of importance to you that you'd like to counsel to hear about. So if anybody's in the audience that wishes to speak, please come up. Let me guess what this is about?
No, it is not.
It's not? Okay.
What is it? Good evening. I'm Mary Gaines. I live at 7270 La Landta Drive in Lewisville, and what I want to talk about is the upcoming number nine on the agenda tonight, the vote on the Terrace for Reynolds Run. And I hope this is the right time-
It's perfect.
-to do that. Good. Okay. Approval of the terrace at Reynolds Run, a three-acre proposed subdivision fronting on Reynolds Road and La Landta. Reynolds Run will have 30-plus houses on quarter-acre sites, and there are five houses planned for the terrace on half-acre lots, so bigger lots. I'm clear, how or when this three-acre site called the Terrace was presented as an addition to Reynolds Run. The terrace will have houses proposed in the 450,000-up range. It is, and of course, I live on a street of modest houses in the 150 to probably 200. So it's considerably above the range of this 1970s subdivision where I live. The terrace is between La Landta, where I live, and the Crafton Creek Cluster Home Community, where now we can see the roof line and the second story of the houses in the Crafton Creek subdivision, because this three-acre tract has been clear-cut. It had 40- or 50-year-old trees on it until the last, probably it's close to over a six-month period. I think that this has been going on, and it's screened completely between La Landta, the lower end of La Landta, where I am, and Crafton Creek, but all of that is exposed now. Get my words right. A large tree-cutting machine came to this site and started zip-cutting trees, just I didn't know anything about it, directly across the street from my house. Several trees were cut, and it kind of stopped, so I thought that was maybe it, that just a part of the trees were going to be removed. Over a period of two or three months, there was much more tree-cutting. I was astonished that after sporadically cutting for a period of two or three months or six months, that every tree was gone from this six-acre, a three-acre site that was completely covered in trees. At some point during this time, I checked with the planning department to see what was going on, because I didn't know, and was told that this had been approved as a part of the earlier approval of Reynolds Run, that it was a major subdivision, and I believe I was told that the owner had the right to cut the trees. Now, maybe I didn't investigate enough, so I don't know exactly where it went wrong, that I didn't know what was going on. After all the trees were gone, then came the bulldozer and big trucks taking away the stumps and everything, and then a large mound of dirt was piled in the right rear corner of this site. Now, for the last month or so, bulldozers and large pans are scraping up dirt on this site and moving it to the Reynolds Run site, changing the topography somewhat of both sites. I attended a recent planning briefing where they were to discuss the clear-cutting of this site. One planning member said that this had gotten by them, the clear-cutting, and that the developer could be penalized and not be allowed to build for three years. The UDO, I think, covers the goal of reducing tree canopy loss and to promote tree protection in the area. I don't know what happened here. It's my understanding now that the developer has agreed to a 20-foot buffer along La Landta to kind of, I guess, screen this, what was a beautiful growth of trees, from the back of houses, kind of in lieu, I think that was an agreement between the planning department, a conversation with the developer. The trees are gone. Obviously, we want the houses built now, because I don't want to look at a pile of dirt for three years and make sure that the buffer is installed. Just, I think my, part of my concern is, what do we do that this does not happen again? It's a major loss to the trees that we have in this area. And obviously, it was horrible looking that I look at every day, but I understand, you know, that private property rights, real estate is my background, and I know that, but I'm not sure that this met UDO requirements the way it was handled, and if it did, we need to work on it so it doesn't happen again, and at least the trees are protected. Everybody's concerned about the environment now, and that it doesn't happen again, and that's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you, Mary.
Okay.
We're gonna hear more about this in just a few minutes when our planner makes a presentation, and I believe we have a little augmentation of the presentation. The council was briefed on this at our briefing last Thursday, so we've had some discussion. We'll kind of get to that in a moment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else wish to speak? Very good. We'll close the public forum, and we'll move down to our planning report on the terrace at Reynolds Run. Stacy?
Ready.
Ready for the next one?
Okay, hold on. You know I'm slow.
Far left.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Tonight before us is a preliminary site plan approval. Just the background of the process for this particular request. When a major subdivision is requested and the zoning, the underlying zoning district does not have to be changed, a public hearing is not required, because it is a by-right request. The thing that is before us is the approval of the site plan for compliance to the Unified Development Ordinance. So the docket is LPBR 2019001. Joyce, if you'll read right ahead.
Sorry.
The ordinance is 2019038, and for the record, the PIN number for the property is 5885-62-1564. So again, tonight, the request is for a major subdivision. The property is 3.51 acres. The development proposes five lots. It is adjacent to the previously approved Reynolds Run subdivision. The new streets will become town streets, and town staff is of the opinion that it is in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance, with the general conformance of the comprehensive plan, and the legacy for the area. If you look at your site plan before you, this will be, well, you can see the hashed area in yellow on the map, that is the property in question. The three parcels to the left are the parcels that were previously approved for Reynolds Run. This is just a cul-de-sac that will be extended into this [inaudible] property with five additional And that is the site plan before you that you can take a look at. Again, you can see the forge way, the cul-de-sac that is gonna be extended into the property. And when the planning board met on July 10th, they voted to include the major subdivision requirements in Chapter D, Section 4 of the UDO, and they also requested, along with staff's recommendation, the seven conditions before you. Sidewalk on both sides of the street extended to encompass this area of the street to be extended. The street tree requirement, that's a general requirement that comes out of the UDO, that they have to have street trees as well as one tree per lot. Number three, to talk, this kind of goes a little bit along with what Mrs. Gaines talked about. When the planning board met, we did have concerns about the visual impact that was made to the area residents with the clear-cutting that happened. We did talk to the developer, and he agreed that we, that he would be willing to put in a 20-foot Type III landscape buffer along La Landta Drive. This is the same type buffer that is required along Reynolds Road for the other subdivision that was already approved. Where it comes around the curve, there's a buffer required there, because it's a main road. But La Landta, there's not really anything required, because it's not, it's just a collector street. It's not considered like an arterial. And so he did agree to put that buffer there, so that is where that condition comes from. The other conditions are just generic erosion control permits. He does meet the fire and life safety code requirements, anything that TRC asked for. All of those have been remedied. There wasn't many comments from TRC. And then also a stormwater management permit through town of Lewisville if it's required. So the planning board did vote to recommend approval to the town council, and I'll accept any questions that you have.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy?
I do have a few, Mayor. Please. Stacy, to start with, what is the definition of a major subdivision, just in general?
A major subdivision, the kind of telltale sign, there is some differences between number of lots, but if right-of-way is dedicated on its new, white road right-of-way, it automatically kicks it into a major subdivision.
Which probably brings me to ask the next question. These are gonna be town main streets, the cul-de-sac, and is it being built to a turnaround standard for garbage truck service and things of that nature?
Yeah, they will be built to NC DOT standards for the town to accept maintenance.
And when you're talking about the buffer along La Landta Drive, is it including the entire, the other three lots going back toward Reynolds Road, or just this one section?
It's just this one section, because of the major subdivision, the previous one on, for Reynolds Run, already being approved.
And that was a different developer, I believe?
Well, no, it was the same developer, but that requirement was not placed on him at that time.
Okay. I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else for Stacy?
Stacy, thinking about this, and I know we probably need to go ahead and have our vote on this before I make my comments, because I think there are some things that we possibly want to talk about. We did discuss at briefing the potential that we would ask the developer to do some additional screening and to try to minimize the visual impact that this clear-cutting has had. Hank, do you have an update for us, I think, that augment that discussion?
Yes, we discussed it at staff level this week, following the council briefing and that discussion, and clearly, there was a process that was not followed with the clear-cutting. Had that process been followed, what is being proposed this evening, as far as no buffering requirements between the adjoining residential lots, the buffering would not be required if the process had been done appropriately. So to, how should we say this, Stacy?
I think maybe some of where the confusion came in, this was prior to me becoming employed in the town, so I'm trying to gather, you know, everything that's kind of happened, but the developer, I think maybe some of the confusions of what he was approved for is, he in fact did have a grading permit, an approved grading permit, and was allowed to grade on this property, to use this dirt as borrow area, to make his roads, to make his lots for the already-approved portion of the subdivision. And so what the planning board discussed was, there is a provision in the ordinance that if, you know, a significant amount of trees or all the trees have been taken out, then, you know, approvals can be withheld, or building permits can be withheld for a term of three years. So that's where that condition came from, to kind of try to soften the impact that's already taken place. There isn't, there isn't really anything that was violated by the ordinance, because we do not currently have a tree ordinance that requires a certain percentage or a certain type of hardwood or something like that to be preserved on a site. But with a conventional subdivision, whenever residential abuts other residential zone property, buffers are not required, because it's just houses beside of houses. Now, if it had been like commercial or something like that, at that point, then it would be required. I think what Mr. Perkins is talking about is, whenever someone comes in, if they already have that approval, and then they go and remove all the trees, they're still not in violation of anything. It's just kind of how this process fell out, with using the borrowed site for this property for the other property, is kind of maybe where the cart before the horse came. So I think that's kind of-
Yeah, that's it. I mean, basically, if there was no controversy about the tree removal now, and he was just going through with the five lots, there would be no requirement to do any buffering to adjoining residential lots.
We do currently have a condition that you do the buffering along La Landta.
Along La Landta, yes. That is a correct condition.
Correct, yes.
That we have already discussed with the developer.
But let me be clear, if he wasn't proposing to build five houses where he's proposing tonight to build them, he could have went in and cut all the trees.
Correct.
Took out all the stumps that he did, put the big graders in there, hauled the dirt from that site to the other site that had already been previously approved, and done whatever's been done there, and walked away from where these five lots are at.
Yes, that is correct.
And it would be like that from ever and ever. Thank you.
Council members, any additional questions, comments?
I think, from our meeting last week, if I remember right, and I don't know if my direction's here, but I'm gonna say, I guess it's south. I believe there's street trees, are there some trees buffering there on that end? Is that right?
The southern property line would be La Landta.
Okay, and then that would be the east, then?
Yeah, east.
East, I'm sorry.
There are a few.
Yeah, okay. And then the other side, which would be the north, is the Crafton Creek. It buffs up to that?
Mm-hmm.
Are there some vegetation in there?
There is. I'm not necessarily sure how much was left on the developer's property, as opposed to maybe there are just trees that are on the already, you know, the homes that are there in Crafton Creek. There is some vegetation there. It's, I wouldn't say it's a significant buffer, but there is some there.
And the developer is not required to put a buffer between Crafton Creek and this property on that side?
No, not the same with the ordinance.
It's only on La Landta. If this is approved, it's only on La Landta, correct?
Right. And that's a-
That piece of it.
Above and beyond condition that he's agreed to.
Can we have that same condition added to Crafton Creek?
Did, what do you, say that again, Mrs.?
Crafton Creek site, can we have that same additional 20-foot condition asked of the developer?
Yeah, you could. That would be the, whatever the council would want to do, and what the developer would agree to.
I'd like to make that request.
Okay. I tell you, we'll let you make the motion, and you can add that to the motion.
One question for the developer on this. Will these homes be part of any type of homeowner association covenants? Yes, they will. I realize by the price point that's going in there, we don't really worry too much about the affluence level of the folks purchasing those homes, but where you do have lot lines bumping up to lot lines, you basically have folks looking out their back doors of the new development and to the backyards of the people who are joining it. What one would suspect is that there will be some kind of fencing put in by those homeowners to be able to probably create the screening that they want from the other neighborhood. Is there any, are there any guidelines in the covenants that require a certain level or grade or quality of screening, or can they just go down to Home Depot and pick up wooden slatted partitions and put them in there?
The one that somebody learns about the fencing, we won't allow certain chain link fencing or something, we'll have the nicer fencing, because it's a nicer, expensive home. So they could, they could enjoy a document which will have this to govern us, showing that what is, can be done, what cannot be done.
Okay, so that's somewhat of a protection for the neighbors adjacent, that they're not gonna be looking at really cheap wooden fences? Okay. Okay. Ms. Mott, it's up to you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. I think we got it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion-
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan and ask for the condition of a 20-foot buffer for Crafton Creek side, just like the one going across Landa.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion by council?
I would like to add, this particular discussion, I support the buffering that you, you spoke of, but I would hate for, quote, a traditional type 30-foot buffer that might take out other vegetation. You know, when, when you specify a buffer, I agree with a buffer, but what would be the most environmentally sound way of putting that buffer in? I definitely would like for the developer to pursue that avenue, if you will. And I don't know how, how you-
Stacy, do we have any requirement for the type of trees or the type of vegetation that goes into a buffer?
Yeah, for a 20- I'm not sure I get this right. Are you speaking specifically about the one that's required on Landa? If that's the same requirement?
No, I was just wondering, you know, I envision what buffers look like if we've required those and some of them matured through the years and so forth. But most of the time, those are put up where you have graded all the way to the edge. Where do you start that? If there's current vegetation already on the property line, trees and so forth, I'd hate to see those disturbed just to put in a mound of dirt, if you will, you know?
Usually with, with a type three visual landscape buffer, the intent that that is getting at is that it is a visual buffer. If there is already vegetation there, we would request that it be infill vegetation, that he don't take, and usually that's what they do because that's technically saving them money. You know, that's-
Right, right.
Why take down a tree when you're going to have to plant one right back, essentially?
So I'm, I'm assuming that that's in Ms. Mock's motion then, right?
Yeah, because there's, there are a few trees left.
Yeah.
Okay. Call a question?
Very good. Question's been called. Ms. Walker, any clarification?
Just want a clarification since you said infill, infill. Do you want to add with a 20-foot infill buffer?
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, environmentally friendly and easy, you know, pleasing.
Very good. Question's been called. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. I do want to take just a moment. I think a number of us have had some concerns about our ordinances that do not protect or at least attempt to, to protect neighborhoods from clear cutting. Certainly, what our planner has explained to me is that the ordinance that we have right now really protects against somebody coming into a lot, clear cutting it, and then leaving it. So we have some protections there in our current ordinance, but what we don't have is protections on a situation like we're talking here. Mary, we're, we're sensitive to exactly what you're saying. A number of your neighbors have called and had that conversation. What we've asked the planning board to do is to take a look at how we move forward and build those kinds of safeguards into our, our ordinances in the future. And I'm not sure what our timetable table is for taking it up, Stacy, but that's on your, among other things, that's on your planning plate. Yeah, okay. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We come to the new items on the agenda, and that's our stormwater ordinance. George, you want to leave your perch and come up and give us a, give us the cliff notes, or the George notes in this case?
In the matter of ordinance, 2019039, a budget amendment in the amount of $12,000. This is actually for a contract that we'll, that we want to enter into for an audit that will probably be coming up in somewhat between March and May. And I'll start off by saying that Louisville is a Phase II stormwater community and as such, it is a federal mandate that we have to have a permit in order to be able to discharge waters or discharge into waters of the United States. So this permit is renewed every five years. Here lately, they've gotten a little bit more stringent as far as the, the process and as far as the audits go for these. So what we want to do is, we, we want to partner with Blue Stream Environmental to assist us with the stormwater audit. And some of the things that they would come in and do is review the stormwater management plan that we have now, review any prior reports that we've done, review any MS4 program organizational charts that we have, review MS4 maps of our outfalls and receiving waters. Blue Stream would be doing four of the six minimum measures, which would be discharge and detection and elimination, construction site runoff controls, post-construction site runoff controls, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. So basically, that's just the background for that. And we hope to get started on this as soon as the contractor can get us some schedule, which would be around October.
Any questions for George? Ms. Walker, just a clarification. In the ordinance that we're speaking of right now, we just have the phrase "a contract for $12,000," but in the actual approval of the contract in the next item, or the authorization of town manager to approve the contract, we have "not to exceed." So I'm assuming we probably want to change 039 to also say "not to exceed"?
Okay. Well, that is the budget amendment.
Right.
That is $12,000. You want to explain that?
If it's not to exceed $12,000 on the contract, you have to, have to have at least $12,000 available.
I got you.
Okay.
So we're, we're covered. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions for George?
I'll make the motion to move the money in ordinance 201939.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mrs. Mock makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. The next resolution is authorizing the town manager to go ahead and award the contract for the stormwater audit to Blue Stream Environmental of Kernersville in the amount, and here's where my "not to exceed" figure comes in, $12,000. May I entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Mock makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. George, tell us about Stormwater Smart.
Right, pretty much like the previous ordinance. The town would like to partner with Stormwater Smart for the purpose of providing direct education services with the aim of contributing to the fulfillment of two of the six minimum measure, control measures required for our permit, which would be the public education and outreach, and the second being public involvement and participation. Stormwater Smart is a specialized environmental program which is managed by the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council. So this is somebody that we've worked with in the past. So they would actually take over and manage the educational and outreach portion of our six minimum measures.
So what does that exactly mean they do for us?
Okay. I'll give you the background on that. This would include classroom visits, when they say typically third, fifth, and eighth grade science classes. They would go to summer camps, girl and boy scout programming, organize and conduct litter cleanups, do library programs, attend fairs and festivals, and make presentations to civic clubs and other groups interested in the environment. And also, let's see, they would contact branch libraries and schools, parks that are serving the 27023 ZIP code or this, this area, and to get them involved in as many of the programs that they can for this educational component.
George, what's the duration of that program? Is it just for a year or is it?
We initially wanted to start it August 1, but it will be as soon as we can get the contract signed and it will run through the end of the fiscal year, then June 30.
Is this for Louisville or is this other communities that this money-
It's for Louisville, but they actually perform this for other communities as well. But this is at least specifically for Louisville for-
Are other communities participating in this amount of money?
I'm not sure what other communities are, are paying to do this.
If, if, Mayor, go ahead, George, I'm sorry.
Actually, it was, it's based on population and then it's, it was prorated. They usually contract for a year, but by we, by us coming in, you know, kind of midstream, it's kind of prorated so that we can get in and get started.
Yeah, it's, you know, the last two years that I've been the town's representative to the Piedmont Tribe Council, Regional Council, there's, you know, been general discussion about the various programs, obviously, that are available for the, gosh, 40-some municipalities and 11 counties now that, that this organization serves and all. And I will say that through the years that we've been involved, obviously, since basically the creation of the town and all of this organization, anytime we invest money for a program that they provide, because it's done in a more collective basis with all of the municipalities or members of the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council, we get a good bang for our buck, is my point that I want to drive home here. So, you know, if this was a private outfit offering to do educational training and materials and things of that nature that wasn't working with other municipalities, I might have a little more hesitation. So I think it would be good for the town to go ahead and participate in this. I think we will get benefit back from the bucks that we spend. And with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this ordinance.
I'll second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. George, I do believe, though, this is required as part of our stormwater requirements or meeting or stormwater requirements to do education.
Yes, this would go along with the permitting process and part of the audit. So we'll have that component take, well, those are actually two components taken care of.
So this is a gun-to-the-head ordinance?
Uh, yes.
And I, I believe, though, that I heard him say earlier that our consultants that we just spoke about in the previous two ordinances is taking care of four out of six. So I'm assuming that these two may be kept to close the gap because there not be duplicative services. So that should put us in good shape for all six points on the audit.
Good observation, Mr. Franklin.
Can I ask a-
Yes, ma'am.
How are we going to measure this between now and June of next year that they actually did this for the Louisville community?
Uh-
Writing any reporting?
That's actually part, they will be, they'll maintain and update service records, including a log of hours served, the types of program and delivered, the number of attendees, if they're collecting trash, the pounds of trash collected during the cleanups. They do some accounting and management reports, and they will host quarterly steering committee meetings to review important aspects of the program. And they will also distribute surveys for the effective evaluation and continuous improvement of the program.
Committee engagement, would that be our utility stormwater committee?
Um-
Potentially, since they're doing things on a quarterly basis. It could match up.
They, it may, but I think they had more in mind where they would actually just host these meetings for probably anybody that wanted to attend and just see, you know, which direction we were going and if we're going in the right direction.
Yeah. Let's plug, let's plug our stormwater group into it if we can because I think their oversight on a lot of activities helps us make sure we, we do what we need to do. If that makes, if that makes, if that's practical to do that, it would be great.
Okay.
So is that reporting that will be delivered to us or do we have to go seek that?
No, it would be delivered to us.
Quarterly or just at the end of the year?
Uh, that I will have to find out for you to see.
I believe it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, George, but I believe it's an annual report. When I was in Rockingham County, I was on that steering committee as staff for Rockingham County. We participated in Stormwater Smart for years with them because they are under that same MS4 permit for stormwater with the feds, so they have, had to do the, the same things that the town now is having to do. But they, they do have that annual report. The steering committee that he's talking about is a staff member of the jurisdiction with that they're representing, and it makes up a board, a decision-making board to drive Stormwater Smart to make sure that they are, you know, using the funds wisely, that they are hitting the measures that they're supposed to hit, and so forth and so on. So that steering committee is made up of employees of those jurisdictions. They do meet quarterly at PTRC and then that helps drive, like, like George had mentioned, helps drive and move forward the, the Stormwater Smart program.
Again, I think it'd be great to have a member of our stormwater committee participating in that if at all possible, along with your capable expertise that it gives the broader horizon to the premise in Louisville that we like things to kind of work through committees.
And Ms. Mock's question about the availability and frequency and so forth, I'm sure that anytime we have any questions, it's simply, you know, simple to make a phone call to them and get that information specifically for Louisville, you know? They're, they're really good to work with, you know?
Very good. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Hank, events?
Okay, upcoming events at Shalford Square and town holidays for the month of August. We have, I guess, coming up on the ninth of this week and the 10th and Sunday, the 11th, we're going to have the second weekend of the performance of the play Bye Bye Birdy. Then moving a little further down into the month, on the 24th, which is a Saturday, we will have a concert in the park. It's a songwriters in the round. And then the 30th, Friday, we're going to have movie night, Zootopia. And I'll go ahead and throw in that on September 2nd, town offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day.
Very good. For those of you who are watching or listening and you haven't seen our production of Bye Bye Birdy, it is a lot of fun and it's a great evening to spend outside. Ms. Mock, I think you attended one?
Two.
Two, attended two and represented our town. And I think we had a, we had a great audience. I think we probably had three, 350 people there Saturday night, and we probably had 150 or 200 folks there Friday night. I don't know what our attendance was Sunday night, but we had good weather.
About the same.
About the same? So we had good weather there the whole time. So if you haven't seen it and you want to take your family for wholesome entertainment, spread your blankets, bring your chairs, sit under the stars, and just have a really great time watching a, a performance of Bye Bye Birdy, I encourage you, we all encourage you to do that. It's a program brought to you by the Parks and Recreation Department, and I think it's, it's certainly worthy of your time. Hank, you want to go over our approvals?
Yes, sir. At the briefing, we took care of three items. First is Resolution 2019057. This was authorizing the town manager to execute a contract with Lusk Tree Care Incorporated for the Willow Run Municipal Service District in an amount not to exceed $12,400 for the removal of trees from the lakes. Second, we had Resolution 2019058 approved confirming the approval of and awarding of a contract for 2019 fall paving for Arrow Leaf Drive to Hills Paving and Construction of Louisville in an amount not to exceed $103,956. And lastly, we had the approval of Resolution 2019059 confirming the approval of awarding the contract for 2019 fall crack pouring and/or road striping to Anderson Asphalt Services of King for various roads, the Great Wagon Road, North Street, David McKee Street, and Four Streets in Sedgwick Neighborhood, Sedgwick Ridge Road, Ridge, Ridge Berry Court, Sedgwick Ridge Court, and Crestway Court, five streets in- Ridge Court, and Crestway Court, Five Streets in Sequoia Neighborhood, Santalina Lane, Mimosa Court.
Goodness.
God in this circle. These, these street names are some, where, where'd you find these things? Sweet, Sweet Bay Court and Thriftwood Trail, Arrow Leaf Drive in Lucy Lane, as noted in the attached contract and estimate sheet for an amount not to exceed $24,050.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have a test on naming those roads, and the people that can name those roads get some, get to share Mrs. Walker's birthday cake.
Mayor, I will say that the contractor is out and working. I saw him in the Sedgwick, uh, neighborhood this week. So, this work is ongoing. That's great.
Um, ladies and gentlemen, the administrative, the approval report that we do, um, during this meeting or actions that we take at the briefing, occasionally we'll take, take some actions and spend some of your money. So, we think it's important that we go ahead and report those actions out at this meeting when we have a much broader audience and, and a whole lot more visibility of the council's actions. Hank, did I skip over your manager's report?
Yes.
Yes, you did, but I don't have anything this evening. So, you're okay.
I anticipated that, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, that meeting was August 1st.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Copy paste.
Copy paste, okay.
There you go, yeah.
Very good, folks. We now come to the second opportunity for public comments. I, uh, do want to recognize the hearty souls in the audience. These are candidates for Lewisville Town Council. As you know, we have an election coming up in November. Mr. Smith, Mrs. Welch, Mrs. Hall, Hall, Hall?
Hunt.
Hunt. I had the first, I had the first two letters right, okay? We'll, we'll get better at it. I'll, if you get ree- if you get elected, I promise I'll learn it. Uh, but thank you for attending the meeting, and, uh, thank you very much for your interest in learning about the council and our, our activities and our businesses prior to your potential opportunity to serve. Um, very good. Any, anyone wish to speak at our public forum? With that, we'll move on to, uh, council comments before we go into an executive session. If none, um, Mrs. Walker, do you want to read our, uh, intro into our executive session?
Yes.
Please.
We will be going into closed session based on State Statute 143-318 dot 11 dot A4 to discuss matters relating, relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, when we do go in this executive session, we do not anticipate taking any actions when we return, so we will pretty much just come out of that meeting and adjourn our regular council meeting. You're welcome to stay and watch us adjourn, but, uh, we don't anticipate that we'll be taking any actions without, entertain a motion to go into the executive session.
So, move?
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?